We chime in soon. Okay, we'll call this work session to order Wednesday, October 21st. Times 1:00 PM. Uh, we will open it up for visitor comments. If you'd like to share, please raise your hand and that will see you. And we will give you the opportunity to share. We'll give it just a minute here to allow people to.
I do not see any comments, Mayor.
Okay. So not seeing any comments, we'll move on with the first item on our agenda, which is a presentation by Columbia River Estuary regarding Dalton Lake Restoration. Jason Smith. Jason.
Uh, do not see Jason Smith on the participant list.
I'm not seeing him either.
I'm going to unmute Lynn Pettit, who I see is on here. I'm not sure if she was going to give her presentation in place. Lynn, are you there?
Yes, I am, and I am not giving the presentation. I just saw an email from Jason saying he hadn't got the information for joining the meeting.
I'm sending it to him right now.
Great, thank you.
Okay, well, let's come back to Jason is Jacob. I see he's here, so let's go ahead and get a planning department semi-annual review report. We'll come back to. Jason. Jacob.
There you are. Okay, yeah, let me get the presentation up here.
Yep.
Okay, so I need to share screen. Okay, great. So thank you, everybody for being here. This is the Planning Department Semi-Annual Report. For a while, we were doing bi-annual reports with both myself and Associate Planner Dim Show. And of course, things have changed. So this is the first one where we're on the semi-annual format where we talk about the strategic plan and other stuff. So one thing about planning. Is we have a pretty broad net in the things that we deal with. And so one of the things that we kind of struggled with in this presentation. With everything on the strategic plan. We're dealing with a lot of the things, but there's only a few things that are planning specific.
Jacob, hold on just a minute. We're getting some feedback. If people could mute their, their computers, please. Okay, thank you.
Is it okay? Okay, okay, okay.
Yes, it's okay. It's okay. It's okay. It's okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, and so the reason I'm starting the presentation with that brief exclamation is there's a couple of slides in here that got in there early on strategic. Action plan stuff that we won't be talking about other than, well, here it is. And that brings us to the first one. Um, this is not a planning department as the sole contact. But we did for work on the old St. Helens Business Partition, but I won't report on that because it's that's for community development. But when we do talk about the planning specific action plans. I'll talk about a couple of them and then Associate Planner Dim Show will talk about a couple of them. And the first one I would like to discuss are the. Floodplain and accessory structure development code amendments. This is something we've been through, so it shouldn't be new to you. This relates to Goal Area 5, long-term planning, identifying potential changes or updates to the code. And this is something we've done a lot. Just a brief summary for those watching in Zoom land who may have not gone through this. The city is a. Participating. Community in the National Flood Insurance Program, which means our citizens are eligible for flood insurance, but then we have to comply with all these wonderful rules. Which basically means elevating. And avoiding floodplains. It's can be way more complicated, but from a basic 10,000-foot level, that's it. And then, you know, one of the things under Goal 5. Updates to the code, identify updates to the code. So we've been talking about sheds for a long time and for years and years, it was 120 that didn't require permit. We increased that to 200 is one of those things. Why are we processing all these shed permits? It was overkill. So that is done. And I'm glad to see that's done. That was a lot of work. Um, and it was kind of a surprise work from the state saying, oh, you get to do all this. So that's that. Uh, the next one I would like to talk about is the next heavy lifting that we get to do. And this was listed under Goal 5, Goal 4, excuse me, Economic Development. It's kind of a Goal 5 thing too, because they are code amendments and we'll be reviewing a lot of amendments related to duplexes. But it's also related to economic development because what this does is it'll help at least theoretically promote diversified housing types. And of course, housing needs is related to economic development because people need a place to live close to where they work, especially. If we're going to try to shed those bedroom community blues that we've had for a long time. The House Bill 2001, I'll be talking about this quite a bit at the next meeting. But just as the primer, this is a bill passed that says certain communities and counties have to. Up their game as far as allowing certain types of residential uses. What that means for St. Helens is anywhere where we allow detached, single-family dwellings, just your standard house. We have an obligation to allow duplexes and we can't have rules that discriminate between duplexes. So if there's a higher standard for a duplex lot size, for example, that's, that's no good. This is something that needs to be done by the end of June next year. We've already talked to the Planning Commission about it at their last meeting and we're going to be talking with you, the council. At the first meeting in November. And so we need you to be prepared for kind of a long discussion because there's a lot of stuff we need to cover. So we can put our nose to the grindstone and get the code written, get it off to the state and all that fun stuff. So we're just starting this one and it'll be really exciting for you all, I'm sure. Uh, now Jenny will talk a little bit.
Great, thanks, Jacob. Can you advance the slide? So, um, as you all know, I've been working with John on an urban renewal. Revenue projections update and a major amendment to help the efficacy of our urban renewal agency. Um, and that's actually on the public hearing agenda for tonight for final adoption. So that's been taking up a lot of my time in the last few months. Next slide, please. I've also been assisting John with the Riverwalk Design and Construction Document. This is also on the work session for today for authorization to move forward with going out to bid for this. Um, and so I've been working with Sue and John to develop this design RFQ. Um, and I think John will talk a little bit more about that later today, but this is super exciting that we're, we're, we're very close to going out to bid for this. Next slide, please. Um, so the St. Helens Industrial Business Park Parcelization Plan is well underway. This is the final parcelization map. We're still working on finalizing the funding plan, so that funding plan will. Phase the infrastructure and come up with a financing plan in order to get the infrastructure needed to parcelize this further. So that's been on my plate for the past few months and it's sort of wrapping up. And that's also been a joint effort between Jacob, John, Rachel, Sue, and I. So next slide. Um, so we now are under an architectural contract with ArkiForm and they are historic preservation. Based architecture firm and we're coming up with a design and cost estimation for the utility billing and court department. We just kicked off the project. It was two weeks ago or a week ago. Um, and so we should be moving pretty quickly through a design process and then figuring out. What portions we can fund now and what portions we want to fund later. So that's been a process with Matt and Jacob and the Planning Commission. Next slide. So the Columbia Pacific Food Bank, as you may remember, this is a community development block grant for one and a half million. We're getting very close to going out to bid. We're working through some legal issues, not issues, but hurdles with sewer line easement. We're very close to executing that agreement. Once we do that, we'll feel comfortable enough to go out to bid for the actual construction. We, I think we've received, if not are very close to receiving our building permit. We're waiting on the sewer easement to be executed for Mike to issue us our permits. So that's been sort of an ongoing process. Jacob has assisted a little bit with the easement documentation and some other things. So thanks to him for that. And next slide. Cool. So I'll throw it back to Jacob.
Okay, so other stuff. So we just presented on the strategic plan items that the council has identified for 20 to 22. Of course, I'm sure you're curious about what else is going on. So as you know, we worked on the Millard Road property, both from a zoning standpoint as well as. You know, working on this access easement issue there. And in the zone change, we added this Ross Road exhibit to demonstrate that it is an alternative for park purposes to the Millard Road property. So that was really fun and exciting stuff. Development, as you can see, and as we've talked about before, there's a whole lot of development going on. And so I just have a few slides with various. Graphics to illustrate, which I'll discuss really briefly. And this is not. An exhaustive list of everything we worked on, but just things of significance in the last few months. So this photo here, this is behind Les Schwab. Which is along the highway. This, of course, isn't along the highway itself. This is property owned by Mark Comfort. He's looking at putting an RV park here. This is actually in the county, but the city has a lot of involvement because it's so close to city limits. This property here, this recently got approval for some apartment units as well as a commercial storefront. This building behind here is the IGA Red Apple. As a lot of us know it, who've been around here for a while, just for location context, though, that's a change that we could be seeing happen. This one here in the middle is the veterinarian building in Holton. And of course, that's finished and the, they're going to move into that very soon. I should say that they're also moving out of these facility on the corner of Furlough Park and US 30, so something will happen with that property. And I have had some preliminary discussions on that one as well. Uh, this one on the right is the, a two parcel partition on, along Dalton Road. On the Columbia River, and I usually wouldn't talk about partitions, but this is one that went to is, has, is. In the Land Use Board of Appeals realm, because it was a decision I made that was appealed to the Planning Commission. That was appealed further. And it's taken hours and hours and hours and hours of time. So thus significant and stuff that's happened. This next slide, this is Hannah Place. This is a 10-lot subdivision. This is on, this is the road that goes up to the middle school. There's a little pathway up to the middle school here. I think it's 15th, if I remember right. So this is, this is a subdivision that's very close to being done. And I anticipate seeing construction on that pretty soon. Uh, the middle school is something we've talked about for three years and hallelujah, it's finally done. And one of the last things they had to do for me is get these little wetland rule signs up. So that's why I have that picture in there. Uh, this. Site plan here shows control solutions. This is on the corner of Industrial Way and McNulty Way. And they are very close to having their building permit. Issued. This one over here on the right, this is a potential subdivision on the, at the end of North 8th Street. So here's the terminus of the street. Just give you a little more locational context. This is the Crestwood Manufactured Home Park. They're dealing with some wetland issues. Throughout the site that they discovered when they removed some trees and they're having a lot of fun with that. I don't know how quick that's going to move, but I do know that they're working with the DSL and Army Corps of Engineers with all the wetland fund they get to deal with on that one. And there's of course more. So these are a couple photos of. Another one of our new subdivisions. This is Greystone Estates, the one by the DMV famously known previously as the Giant Pile of Dirt, which was there for a while. And this is another subdivision that is very close to being done and. Not too long in the future, you'll see a bunch of houses in here. As a reminder, there's 78 residential lots, two commercial lots in that development. Over here in the corner. This is just a little map of Armstrong World Industries and early in the year and then within the last, I don't know, month or so. There's been discussions about moving some property lines around and it's complex because DEQ has their issues on it. And this one, there's a bunch of discussion. We want to move, we want to move. And then I don't hear anything again, but it has been something that we've dealt with. So I want to at least talk about it. And a significant industrial property for us. A little bit more grocery outlet. They. Are right by Legacy on the highway. Their building permit is getting really close to being approved. So that's something we'll see break in ground. Something we talked about quite a bit are the apartments behind Grocery Outlet along Mattson Street. So this is Mattson Street right here. Those apartments, you know, they may be done by next month. They do have some metal supply issues. Which is affecting things like stairwells and bike racks and they're pretty behind on their bike racks because of it, but everything else is moving. Pretty smoothly. And then there's going to be a storage facility constructed right here. Just to help you understand where this is at, it's right behind the Village Inn. Now this property here, who can guess where we are at here? Somebody want to take a crack at that?
If you could blow it up a little bit more, maybe I could see.
That's a transfer station.
Yes.
Oh, yes, it is.
So that's along Gable Road. This is the other apartment complex that was approved by the Planning Commission last year. And there's been a whole lot of active discussion on that, so that they're, 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 they're still, they're still moving. So I don't know how soon they're going to break ground. They talked about trying to get their. Building plans, building permits in in April or so.
Jacob, uh, that one there had, uh, some state funding as well, correct?
Yes, it is. My understanding is it is an affordable housing project and they're going to have. A situation where you have older folks and younger folks and a multi-generational thing going on. So it's, it's an interesting, it's an interesting project. Whereas this one here is just your typical market rate apartments. So two big projects. This one is. 204, if I remember right, and this one's 238. So it's even bigger than that one and pretty crazy to think about. Because we haven't seen large developments, apartment developments like this. Much in St. Helens or in the county, for that matter. Annexations, we have three on deck right now, potentially fourth one, and eventually we'll get to those. Of course, there's the police station analysis. Um, you know, planning has had some input in that. And I, these, so we deal with a lot of single-family dwelling permits and that's not something that is usually worth talking about, but sometimes. Just building a house on a property can be as complex as developing a commercial property. And this one is one along North 18th Street. It wasn't so bad. We needed to get this easement in place. And so that was a little bit of work. But this one here along Columbia Boulevard, this is Columbia Boulevard. It's just so it's bad, it's our flat road. Uh, this one is one of those really time-consuming, complex ones. Just to mention that, you know, even the simple projects that don't get a planning file name can still really be. Time-consuming and complex, but we wanted, you know, help people the most we can. And so that's where a lot of that time consumption comes from, from. Planning Department goals. So if we go back to last year and the early part of this year. You may remember us discussing our goals and this was before the council formulated their own. One of the things we talked about was staff training. Christina Sullivan was recently brought on for the Planning Secretary role and then. That meant Jenny didn't have to do that stuff anymore. And so it was getting, continuing to train Jenny on current planning and all that stuff. And then Christina getting up to par, that's really helped make things efficient as we grow and as permit insanity continues, which it has throughout this year. And we don't see any sign of that stopping. One thing that we talked about last year is this, the connection from river to Second Street. This is something that. You know, we hope to complete. Sometime in the relative near future. I don't think it's going to take a lot of time. It's just a matter of getting certain projects done, so we can focus on that. And then cottage cluster code amendments, that's just another housing type. I'll talk about that more at the council's next meeting when we talk about duplexes, but that's something else. In the future for us to work on. Jenny.
Awesome. Thanks, Jacob. I feel like that was like, phew, it was a mile, ran a mile. Uh, next slide. Um, so in the midst of all that, um, due to COVID, there was some pressure to create a formal parklet application. So we did this. Little form and we did get an application. It may have stalled due. I think maybe to OLCC regulations about where to serve alcohol. They were working through that. So we never got a formal, we, we got an application, but we never completed the, the process. So maybe we'll see one of those. When the weather starts to turn nice in the spring and summer of next year. Next slide. So I just have to do a slide about grants because that's a lot of my time. So here's a list of some capital project funding support since my last. Report to you all, which was, I think in March. So since then, we've, we applied for the build grant. We, you know, found that we were not selected for that. But that's okay, because we have pending approval of the OPRD Land Water and Conservation Grant for 500,000. We're still waiting on. Federal processes to make that a formal approval, but that is coming. The OPRD Local Government Grant Program, we've applied for another 500,000 at the same time. I say pending review because we haven't done our presentations to the board. Those have been on hold while the state figures out their revenue projections for lottery funds, because that's where local government grant program funding comes from. Um, and they were very unknown throughout COVID and continue to be sort of up in the air. So I reported on a Scappus Bay Watershed Council Partnership through Oregon OWEB, Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board. They were successful in getting about $13,000 to do some restoration along the Fifth Street Trail and in Nob Hill Nature Park. So we're partnering with them on that. Um, and then also I've been working with John. On a application to the Business Oregon Infrastructure Funding Authority Special Public Works Fund. Um, and this loan would fund all of the public improvements on the veneer site. So streets. Utilities, any remainder of the Riverwalk that we don't get in grants. And all the design for, for all that work. So that's been. The capital project funding support in the last few months. Um, next slide, if there is one. Yes, so this came up recently. Um, this is a newer grant program through Oregon Department of Transportation called the Community Paths Program. It's intended for regional trail connections. Um, and in our TSP and in the county's TSP and Scappus's TSP, there's a identified. Trail study between St. Helens and Scappus. Um, that's been an identified need to improve connectivity between the two cities. That benefits things like our trails tourism, bike tourism. But also just resiliency between the two communities to have an alternative route between them. Um, so we just submitted a letter of intent to apply. We received interest from the City of Scappus and the County Board of Commissioners on this. And so. In November, we will be invited to apply hopefully and then. See if we are successful. So that's all I have. Any questions for either of us?
Stuff times infinity. Welcome to the Planning Department.
Also, our offices are completely torn up right now upstairs. So I am in the conference room slash storage facility.
Yeah, we have potential nightmarish conditions given the office construction. Building Department's E permitting starts on Monday, and so there's going to be some learning curve on that. And we're seeing this weird surge in October. It's crazy. God help us.
I'm just excited about the waterfront. The projects there would be the grant and then the public works loan. That we're able to move forward and also knowing that it's in our urban renewal as well, that we have many funding mechanisms to move the waterfront forward. It's actually starting to happen.
Yeah, it's a really exciting time right now.
Hey, um, just wanted to thank you both for all your hard work on the, um, the parklet. I know that, that we didn't get a parklet, but I think that it was encouraging for me to go to local businesses. And kind of give them permission to contact you, to ask the questions about sidewalk dining. Because they were a little nervous and I was like, it's okay. Don't be afraid. Jenny will help you. So I'm just really glad that we had that conversation like two years ago about how to grow businesses and how to grow kind of that placemaking of Main Street. So it was handy that we had already had those dialogues before COVID. Because it's like, it's just another tool in the toolbox, as Jacob always says, you know, you always have tools and it's just a matter of having the right tool for the right issue. But I just appreciate all your hard work in the vision, in the face of all the development to be able to turn and react for those small local businesses to try to meet their needs. I appreciate all your patience and all your due diligence in helping those folks. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Concerns about the boardwalk and the. Conceptual plans of the veneer plant. The boardwalk, as I see it, has no real access for handicapped. But let's go back one step. A few months back, I asked our engineering department for all the permits needed for the, uh, for a kayak launching. Over by Gray Cliffs, because I know talking to Marine Board, there's a number and a number of these same permits are going to be required for the, uh, boardwalk. Just because of the proximity to the river. And I haven't gotten a list yet. Have you looked into the list of all the things that are required to do things next to the river? But my big concern is that, and the next step showing all the condos. With that river walk, that's going to get closed off by the condos and there's absolutely no access. Easy access for handicap to that whole river walk. It's going to be.
So Counselor Topaz, I think you bring up a good point. There are overlapping agents, state agencies and federal agencies that care about water in, or in water work along the Columbia River. And, you know, John can mention this when he talks about the RFQ later, but we're asking for design services to help us through those permitting processes. And we're asking for expertise in, in water permitting because we are very aware of the, the permits that are going to be needed for work in water. Um, and it's a requirement from our grant source that these be completely ADA. Disabled handicap accessible. So that, that's not true.
The layout says it's not, just the way it's laid out. And what I'm worried about in the future, if we have a lot of, uh. Condos down, the condos have a habit of forming condo associations and the way the conceptual plan is laid out. They can easily block off that and complain that your front yard is being ruined by this boardwalk and all these strange people are bothering them.
So I, I, I just want to chime in. Counselor Topaz, she assured you that that was not true. And, and we, we have to use a big flag for that to make. I'm trying to share and you're interrupting me. I will let you talk. Please allow me to talk. She assured you that that was not true. The waterfront has always, it is always going to have complete public access, the entire length of the entire waterfront. And it's going to be ADA accessible. She said that is one of the requirements for the grants. So we want the agency access. We'll, we'll let the agencies do their job and we won't micromanage and we'll let our staff do our job. Okay?
Well, now I'm talking, it's my turn. One of the things we know right now, people go down around the quote beach at the very end of the. Boardwalk and go fishing and the design I see, there's no access to the water. There's a look of the river, but not access to the river. I want to be real careful on access to the river. I don't also handicap, there's going to have to be at least 10 different portions with that. Boardwalk is accessed by the handicap. Right now, uh, it's a long walk or a long push for a wheelchair to get from the road to where that is. So that's one thing. I want to be real careful that we have access to the river, not just to look at it. And this, that's going to include the tribes, the Army Corps, the Marine Board. And this, that's going to include the tribes, the Army Corps, the Marine Board, a couple of historic other things. Okay. Next thing I am a little bit worried about, you showed a petition on the industrial, the mill plant for where the marijuana place is. Now, as far as I know, the petition hasn't been okayed or requested by the council. But the problem is that some of that work was started before the urban renewal process started. So we've got date problems of when some of that was started. And I want to know if that's going to interfere with the urban renewal business. Because, and the other part of that petition is, and this goes also back to the marijuana place. In the purchase agreement with the Packaging Corporation of America, half of the rent that we were to collect on any portion of that mill property was to be shared with them. And by now, we should have been sharing something like a half a million dollars. Their cut would have been a quarter of a million dollars on that. And is that going to cause a problem with that petition, the marijuana place and not sending rent to them? That's the next part of the thing I'm worried about. And the times are going to overlap. I am looking, as I did to a boardwalk, that some of these things are long-term things. And if you don't get them started in the very beginning, you know, you get five years down the road and all of a sudden, what you didn't do five years ago comes up and bites you. So that's a concern that I'm having with that part of the urban renewal, that big portion of the mill site that was, first it was going to be rented, then it was going to be bought, but time sequences before the urban renewal. And there's that outstanding rent that the mill property should have paid, the city of St. Helens and the St. Helens should have paid the Packaging Corporation of America. The other possibility is that they are a partner in the marijuana production and they are foregoing their rent. And I don't know where that stands. So I would hope that they know that that piece of property is being sold to a marijuana operation. Because otherwise, they're an international company, but at least they're in a state and being in a marijuana business and interstate may cause problems. Again, some of these things are just pieces that started a long time ago. But I'm very worried about the access to the river.
Councillor Topaz, you are, you are not.
I'm talking. The.
We lost you.
On the handicap.
Oops. Councillor Topaz. For some reason, we have lost you.
I've got everything.
So I, I, I just got to say that it sounds like maybe there's a little bit of overreach by a councillor. Particularly you, councillor Topaz, as far as reaching out and investigating under, there were so many different pieces to what you just said. I don't know what you were saying. And my understanding is you're trying to represent the city as a whole and not letting anybody in this entire council or staff know exactly what you're doing. Because we're getting phone calls on you, councillor Topaz. And, and that you are reaching out to entities and requesting information and talking just like you did to them. And they don't know what you're trying to say to them and where you're going with it.
You have not.
I have a question. I have a question for councillor Topaz.
Right.
I have a question. And my question is just, where did you get your information that there will be that any of our people who want to develop that area for residents are, are doing condos? It's been on the contrary that, that the residences would be apartments and not condos. Where did you get that? Where did you get that in for? Where'd you get that information?
When I look at the site plan, it looks like condos to me. It does not.
It's apartments. And it's been, the talk has been apartments all the way.
So I, I would just like to recap that Planning Commission has a lot going on. They're very busy. They're very thorough. They are assured the citizens that there will be complete ex riverfront access. It will be ADA accessible, the whole, it's one of the requirements. I don't know what he was talking about, the mill and the urban renewal and the agreements that he has tried to dig up without talking to any myself or any other councillor. It seems kind of odd that somebody would just go above and beyond setting policy and start to do engineering and financial and every little aspect to try to critique anything that has been done through attorneys and through planning and through, these are the experts. We deal with experts, ladies and gentlemen. I just want to assure you as citizens that we use our staff and our staff uses experts to get their information and move the city forward. I want to completely assure you of that. Jacob, Jenny, you guys are doing a phenomenal job. There's a lot going on. And correct me if I'm wrong, but did, is Jenny now actually can do plan reviews? Is that correct? Has she got her credentials or is she, is that coming soon, Jacob?
Jenny is a certified planner now.
Excellent. Congratulations.
And, and even before, it's just the training her, it's, the certification doesn't give her that. It's her job description is what does. But current planning can be vast and varied. And I've done it for almost 20 years. And so I am schooling her on when weird things come, come up to help her increase her wisdom of it and just become better at current planning when she has time for it, working on the grants and stuff.
Yes.
Then I had one comment. As far as, I mean, my understanding is the riverwalk is a conceptual drawing. It is not a build document. So you can't take that at face value until we actually have official build documents that will, you know, articulate the full accessibility of the project.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Carlson. There was one comment I wanted to make about councillor Topaz's pointing out rightly so that people actually want access down to the water, because that's how it's currently used. And I think that's great input. And this RFQ is for the design, the formal design, as councillor Carlson noted. And those types of input can be incorporated into the final design. And so if there's a desire to actually incorporate, you know, at water access for fishing or a beach is another thing that people have mentioned, those things, it's, those things will be brought up through the design process.
Right. But Jenny, just, just to kind of back it up a little bit, every, every waterfront plan, every park plan, every trail plan that we've done in the last three years has been inclusive and equitable. Every single new plan going forward will be built with access for all of our citizens. So just because you see a picture does not mean that's what we're building, because we're not going to build anybody, anything in our community that's not fully accessible. And that's in all of the master plans you've been working on. So that's why I look at it and I'm like, this will all be worked out before it gets, I'll see a drawing of an actual build document that will detail all of this, because those are council goals and guidelines that we set forth years ago. Is that the waterfront belonged to all the citizens, not just a handful of citizens that live close. I just wanted to make sure, because people like to throw stuff out there like we're trying to hurry, scurry and shut people out. And at no point in the last eight years that we've been looking at that waterfront, have we ever tried to keep anyone out? And I just don't want that to get the oxygen that people seem to want to give it. Because we are, that is fully accessible. That is at the core of this council. Nobody's ever deviated from wanting the community to have access to the river. That's why we bought that property. It's just would be silly to borrow it, people from it. We would have let a developer do it years ago if we wanted to block people from the water. That's just, I just wanted to put that on the record, because there, there's a stream of conversation that predates councillor Topaz and predates the mayor, that that's been the vision from the get-go.
Well said. Well said, Jenny. I appreciate you saying that. And one of the things that we were committed to do when we went forward with obtaining that property was to make certain that our citizens did have access to the waterfront. And along with that, we established Great Cliff Waterfront Park with the access. And councillor Topaz alluded to the kayak launch. And yes, that's what we continued on that, on that theme of our public needs access to the river. Because that river is, that river is, is, is a, is a diamond in the rough for our city. I mean, it is amazing what that river draws to our community in terms of interest, in terms of aesthetic, in terms of recreation. It's, it's amazing. And yeah, to cut off any access would just be unbelievable by any of us on the council. So I, I just want to make certain the councillor Topaz knows that before he came along. Yes, Jenny, there was a tremendous amount of work and effort and guts to go ahead and purchase that property from Boise Veneer.
Okay. And I, just for everybody who watches us now or later on, when we, we implemented rules, when we changed the zoning of that property from industrial to riverfront district, we implemented rules to, to guarantee public access. And two, any use of the property does require permits. So any plan, you know, can show toxic waste processing, it could show a giant red dog on a conceptual plan, but it all requires a permit, which, you know, itself has its public process.
One of the things the mayor hasn't understood, I'm representing the people and these are questions that people are giving to me and I'm giving to you. I know you take it personally that I'm bothering you, but I'm trying to get answers to questions that people are asking me. So if you think that I'm bothering you, go for it. But these are really questions that the citizens have been asking me, because they're worried. Rumors in town are a big thing.
I am, I, the reason I brought that up is because you're setting the city up for a lawsuit, because you are not allowing anybody or giving any legal counsel, which you have the opportunity to have represent you as a councillor and you're not doing it. You're not letting our manager know anything that you're doing. He runs the show, not you. John Walsh runs the show. We set policy. John Walsh moves the city forward. We set the policy. That's our job. Understand it, councillor Topaz. We're going to move on to the next item on our agenda.
I ask questions and I, citizens ask.
We've talked enough about this subject. We're going to move on to our next item.
Civil rights for public speaking.
Councillor Topaz, we're out of order, please.
Trying to bring forth what the citizens say.
Councillor Topaz, I made myself very clear of what you were doing and not doing and how we run as a city and we're not unique in the way we run our city. It's like every other city, we set policy, we allow the administrators and staff to do their job. If we have questions, we ask them of our legal counsel or our administrator. We do not make phone calls to cascade tissue out of the blue to ask them questions without our city manager knowing. Or any of our citizens, because you maybe have what, one or two citizens? We represent 13,500. How many people have reached out to you, councillor Topaz? Maybe 10? Total?
I'm not going to tell you, but it's more than that.
Okay, we represent all citizens, not just, not just the few. So we're moving on to our next item, which is, we're going to come back to number one, which is a presentation, because I see that Jason is here. A presentation by Columbia River Estuary regarding Dalton Lake Restoration.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for your time and thanks for accommodating some technical difficulties that I had in the beginning and adjusting your schedules accordingly. I appreciate it. I've been told I've got about 10 minutes and five minutes for questions. So I'm going to start the screen share and, and start my presentation for you guys. Okay. So are you guys seeing the full screen slide or are you seeing the partial screen side with the notes and all that?
Oh, we're seeing full screen.
Excellent. Thank you for confirming that. Appreciate it. So again, I'm Jason Smith. I'm a Habitat Restoration Project Manager with the Columbia River Estuary Study Task Force. Crest, you know, we're a council of governments. We're serving local governments surrounding the Columbia River Estuary, mostly down the lower river, but we do projects all the way from the mouth of the Columbia River all the way to Bonneville Dam. We provide land use planning, special project assist, assistance for our members as a regional kind of planning body, and we assist the agencies with salmon recovery efforts. Crest was formed in 1974 to develop the Columbia River Estuary Management Plan through a local and collaborative process. We assisted with the credit, which is the Columbia River Estuary Data Development Program. And we also assisted with the Oregon Plan for Salmon and Watershed. Our current members are Katsup County, Waukeaham County, Cities of Astoria, Warrenton, Deerheart, Seaside, Cana Beach, Alaco and the Port of Astoria. So many benefits to Crest. We, we really, we collaborate on voluntary, on voluntary restoration projects with landowners. Crest engages in conversations with willing landowners to determine long-term goals for the property based on what the landowner wants. Crest can develop habitat restoration projects that meet both the landowner's needs and helps restore the natural landscape. We're really a kind of a cost-effective solution for our members and jurisdictions. We provide a lot of services ranging from, you know, planning, permitting, wetland delineation, grant writing, restoration, all sorts of things. And so it's really a great opportunity for the regional cooperation between our members' jurisdictions and ability to learn and provide input, work on work that's occurring throughout the estuary. Why restoration in the Columbia River? Well, there's a lot of reasons, but it all mainly focuses on the 13 species of salmon and steelhead that are listed under the Endangered Species Act. The dams on the river and to create hydro power, they, they kind of trigger that we've got these agencies, we got endangered species. It triggers the do no harm. And so we, they came up with the Federal Columbia River Power System Biological Opinion, which requires a series of mitigation measures called reasonable and prudent alternatives. And one of those alternatives is Columbia River Estuary Restoration Projects to mitigate for the impact of those dams. Crest is done, this is since 2010. The orange triangles are red. I'm not sure what color it's coming across as. Those indicate projects that we've completed since 2010. And then the purple indicate projects that are in the planned or designed phase right now. And looking at this, this is actually a little bit dated, a few of these purple polygons here now completed. Yeah, as you can see, there's been a lot of work in the lower estuary in the Astoria area. And then there's been quite a bit of work on the Savvy Island area. And, and then just, just kind of north of that is, is our project area in Dalton Lake. And I'll have to add one here for, for the, another polygon for a planned project. So the Crest Habitat Restoration Project is pretty straightforward. We identify, prioritize, develop potential restoration projects. We scope and select restoration projects based on a technical evaluation and scientific review. We, we try to design and implement about three to five on-the-ground estuary and restoration projects each year. Sometimes we do more than that. Sometimes we do less, depending on how technical and how difficult they are and the permitting processes required. And we also try to coordinate and conduct action effectiveness monitoring and research of each one of our restoration projects. And we do that for about one year prior to the restoration effort taking place. And then we monitor it for five years after a restoration effort has been completed. And some, sometimes if we can get funding to do so, we'll even go longer than that. But focusing in more on a, on the project at hand, the Dalton Lake Nature Preserve. Our goal for that project is really, you know, there's already, and it's, it's an amazing site. It's already functioning at a high level, but it's got one key issue. It's not providing any sort of fish access for salmon. So our goal is to improve and restore, maintain those existing ecosystem processes, but also promote multi-species benefit. but also promote multi-species benefits. Because right now it's really benefiting waterfowl. I mean, there's, there's Lynn and Counselor Morton and everybody talked to me about, you know, there's just hundreds of birds that are using this site. And there's some really great native plants using this site and, and other great species. So we're, we're really just trying to promote those multi-species benefits, get salmon utilizing this historic habitat that they, that they likely had used in the past. And the other main goal is we really want to maintain public access. It's a great trail right now and, and they've done a lot of work to make it better in the recent years. And that's, that's, that's become really apparent. And we just really want to help out with that process. So anything that we did would, would maintain the existing access or improve it if we were going to do, remove that water control structure and put in any sort of different opening to promote fish access. We would put in a pedestrian bridge that will be able to accommodate access to the, to the trail system and beyond. We currently just went through a competitive bidding process. We put out an RFP to hire an engineering and design firm to investigate the feasibility of restoration at this site. We received proposals from six highly qualified consulting firms, those are listed there. Throughout the review process, it, it was a unanimous decision that Wolf Water Resources put together the best proposal and had the best, best qualifications and experience, had the best methodology and approach, and they also had the best budget. So it was a, it was a no-brainer to select them. Like I said, across the board, they received the highest scores in all the categories. So we're really excited to bring them into the fold. We're hoping to have a, a, either a virtual, likely a virtual given the COVID pandemic, but a virtual kickoff meeting soon. Right now, we're just kind of working on the contracting and making sure we get all the contracting put together and all the insurance documents and so on and so forth. And, and then we can start moving through this process and timeline. We've already kind of completed that first bullet with the exception, the contract isn't quite finalized. The next steps will be data collection and background research. So we can really figure out, figure out what's currently going on there, what historically happened there. And then we can start plugging away, build a model, develop restoration alternatives, and then bring those alternatives to the stakeholder group and, and determine what's the best alternative that could, that could potentially benefit that site for all the species we talked about. And then bring that selected alternative to the 30% design level. Here is, this is Wolf Water Resources project experience. This is just a few of the project they listed. And it's probably pretty small on your screen, but, and I'd be happy to share their proposal with anybody who's interested to receive it. But they, they just, across the board, had great relevant examples of projects. They're working on projects just upstream and just downstream that have very similar landscape features and similar project elements as this project. So it was, it was a really good fit. And here's the schedule on the right-hand side. We're, we're hoping to move through this process fairly quickly. Again, because this is just a feasibility and alternatives analysis. So we, we'd like to see if this is a feasible project and see what we can do. And we're just, we're just happy to, happy to be involved and happy to have the great project partners we've got with the City of St. Helens and the folks with the Dalton Lake Nature Preserve and ODOT and just, just everybody. And we're super happy to have Wolf Water Resources on board. Any questions?
I had a question, the cost of the, the project and the cost of the work? And what is the strategy for covering the cost?
So right now, the project is being funded. We've received funding from Bonneville Power Administration, who is one of the agencies that has to mitigate for their impacts to salmon. So they are contributing, right now they have signed off on contributing all the funds for feasibility. And then at that time, once we've gone through feasibility and selected a preferred alternative, bring it to 30% design, we will then return to them and their, their expert regional technical group will, which is a panel of scientists from the whole Columbia River Basin as well as down in the Puget Sound. And that expert regional technical group evaluates the merits of the project and they score it on a cost-benefit perspective to determine its level of benefit to salmon and the relevant dollar amount that correlates with. And so at that time, they will score, rank our project and they, that will determine how much funding we have to finish design and to implement the project. So right now, we are planning on the entire project being funded by Bonneville. Our preliminary review shows that this, this site is really a great fit. And it, based on past RTIG scoring and responses, it currently looks like it's going to pencil out and that Bonneville will fund the entire project. Of course, that could change at any time. In an event that we don't receive full funding from Bonneville, Crest has a number of examples of projects that we've been able to combine funding from other entities like OWEB, Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board to close that gap and to get this, these great salmon restoration projects on the ground.
Okay, and then I have two, I had two other questions, sorry. I wanted to ask if people in the community that aren't listening today or people that want to know more, is there a web link or someplace where people can get more information? And will there be a strategy to involve the community?
Yeah, so our, our, right now, our website, it would probably be the best way to get ahold of us. And so I'd be, I'd be happy to share that information. I'm also, we're also, throughout the process, we're going to include, we're going to include Friends of Dalton or the Dalton Lake Nature Preserve folks, the Parks and Trails folks, and ODOT as well as Public Works. And, and those were, those were the stakeholder group that we initially thought would be involved in the alternatives analysis. But we are happy to receive comments throughout. This is an early feasibility stage. So really our, our public engagement, really that, that, those kind of requirements come along in our permitting process, which typically happens later, in, later around our 60% design phase. But at this early stage, we'd be happy to receive as much input as we could get. Really, the more information we can get on what people want for that property, the better. And that, that way we can put our best foot forward and put the best project forward.
Thank you.
Jason, this is Doug Morton.
Hi Doug.
Can you elaborate on a, the effectiveness of the location of, of, or the merits of the location of Dalton Lake as it sits with the Columbia River and a salmon smolts? Does your study give you any effectiveness in, in, in terms of the location? In other words, is it too far downriver or upriver or could you comment on that by chance?
Yeah, so the location of Dalton Lake is actually, the, the reason, when I, when I showed that map earlier, you know, the, the, the reason we focused on these areas, if, if you can still see my screen here, is that really, you know, this, this, this area is pretty critical for salmon and their migration because there's really hardened land, hardened landscapes upstream of this site that there's just really not much access to off-channel habitat. And off-channel habitat has a number of benefits. There's, there's reduced predation off-channel than there is in the main stem. So really providing these kind of critical off-channel habitats is super important for multiple life history strategies for, for salmon. But it's, the, this location is, is perfect because it, it gives just one more opportunity for them to get off-channel and to have more access to a lot of this habitat that had been lost due to development and other, other things that have happened in the past. So really this, this site is, is going to rank highly in that, in that scoring process because, because of its relative location in the landscape. And does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for elaborating on that.
My only question would be, knowing, being here as a native before that pipe was put in, that, that was never really accessible to fish prior to. It was always kind of robed just a little higher than the tide line. And if you're proposing that it would be an access for fish, would that potentially dry up the lake in the summertime? Because I gotta tell you, I, I've walked that when I was a kid, 47 years old. So since seven years old, I've been down there.
Yeah, yeah, great.
I'm going to tell you right now, it was just always a marshy kind of beaver area that was well above river level. And it was just a marshy walk-through. So are you proposing to dig it out so salmon could actually make it into there? Because if that's the case, then what are we looking at in the summertime? Just a dry lily patch of Dalton Lake? It's not a lake? And then we lost, then we lost some of the birds that we have there.
Good, very good question, very good question. So this is a similar project to one we're doing. It's called the Polensky Wildlife Area or Burlington Bottoms, which is just on the, the other end, that would be what, the east end of Scappus. We're working on that, that project with ODFW, NRCS and Bonneville Power as well. And that, that has some critical amphibian and amphibian habitat. There's, there's turtle species there using it. And so that project, we're trying to do the same thing, maintain water levels to create those multi-species benefits while providing salmon access. So that's, that's the same, same thing we're going to look at with this. There's going to be an extensive modeling effort because one thing we don't want to do is we don't want to create a summertime dry lily patch, like you'd said. You know, we really want to, we want to maintain the processes that are occurring. So we're going to be, we're going to be looking at what's been happening, how it's been managed in the past. And, and we have a, a long-term data set or we're developing a data set for the water elevations that have been occurring in there. And then we will, we'll build models based on that. And then, and going back to your comment about what it was like when you were a kid, that's, that's absolutely something that we really want to look at, you know, is, is we're, we're going to pull up the historic core of engineer aerial images and also the general land office maps and look to see historically, was it connected for salmon? And those are, those are all questions that we'd like to answer. And, and if it wasn't, well then maybe this isn't the best fit to do a salmon-specific restoration effort. But you know, we, those are all questions that we, we hope to answer in this. And, and if we do make any connections through there, it's going to be really important to, to make sure that we're not, we're not draining the wetland. That's, you know, draining wetlands is never something that Crest strives to do. You know, we're trying to create these wetlands and enhance and improve them.
Sure, I just know there was a project that, what's called Gunner's Lake here in Columbia County and the Scappus School District was involved in that. And they worked with experts and they actually lowered the, the lake and any locals would know that. And it kind of ruined the lake, it lowered it by, by at least a foot. And the fish slowly went away, actually. And that, that's just one, one example of trying to do some good and then it made it worse sometimes. So I, I'm all about fish, just so you know, the fish habitat, okay? And that's why I threw out that question, because I don't know how much it would benefit small.
Yeah, and that, one, one other thing is even without providing a connection for fish to access it, these sites oftentimes, from a food web perspective, can export prey and nutrients that are critical to the river. So you can still get projects funded without necessarily providing fish access just due to the food web benefits. Because research is indicating that some of these off-channel wetlands, the, the prey and nutrient flux that kind of comes in and out of these sites is hugely beneficial to salmon that are migrating, particularly for the juveniles migrating out or heading to the ocean. So, so yeah, these are all super interesting things. And, and the part of the, this whole feasibility study is really to kind of dive in and find out all these details and, and figure out, you know, what, what possibly is, is this, is this a good idea? Is it a bad idea? What other, you know, it just, there's, we're very early in the process, but these are, these are all great questions and things we're super interested to find out more about.
Hey, other questions for Jason? All right, I don't see any, Jason. Hey, thank you for your presentation and we look forward to seeing what you guys come up with.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate your time.
Yep, we sent one question going back to historic times. Will you, will your research say whether that lake was ever leveled or majorly manipulated by the timber companies? Again, I'm going back to the 1880s or someplace in that. Or do you go that far back when you investigate?
Uh, we're gonna, the historic core aerial images are usually as early as the 30s. The, the other maps and GLO maps and so forth are late 1800s. That's, that's typically, and then we also look at any available, any, any, any other available information out there. But those are, that's typically a starting process for us. Are those core aerial images, they really tell a lot. And those historic maps can really, really give you a good background of what has happened there in the past.
The reason I ask that is right next to Dalton Lake up against Columbia City, there used to be some major shipbuilding. And they had a tendency to rip up land pretty good. And I was wondering whether you have any information on what it looked like before the shipbuilding got started?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure how far, usually when you request those aerial images from the core, it's only, you, you're only able to request so many images. And then before they start charging you per image. And that's available to the public as well beyond us. So if you're ever interested in looking, you know, at core or historic aerial images of, of the landscape, landscape in your neighborhood, you're, it's, it's usually just along the Columbia River there. But they, they have that information available for a fee. But yeah, we will look at a mile, up to a mile downstream and up to a mile upstream for our project area. That's what we're going to focus on and, and coming in more and more focus, you know, of course, on the lake itself.
Yeah, because some of that was done before they invented airplanes. That's why I asked.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's why we go back to the GLO maps, which are the late 1800s. And then, you know, it gets harder and harder to find good information the further back you go.
Okay, thank you, Jason.
Thanks again.
Yep. Okay, now we're going to go to our next item, which is Review Proposed Technology and Telework Policies and Procedures Handbook Map.
Thank you Mayor. This is on for your approval at tonight's meeting. This is a expanded version of a technology and teleworking policy that the city has created. In our past personnel policies, the IT section has been fairly short and nondescript. So with all of the technology advantages that we have had and all the now teleworking employees that we have working with COVID and their trials being at home because of the schools being closed, we've created some new policies and procedures for those teleworking and technology habits. And so this handbook is, will be signed by every employee once approved by you tonight to ensure that everyone is following the same rules and guidelines and processes for that. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you had any chance to review the document. Other than that, that's all I had to report on this.
Hey, I'm not seeing anybody. All right, let's go ahead and go to the next item, Matt. Review Proposed Athletic Field Rental Process.
Yeah, so this document is again on for approval tonight. This is a update and change from our current practice of our athletic field reservation process. Currently, right now with COVID, we're obviously not taking any reservations on fields. And that is not anything that we're changing tonight. But we're looking into the future of how we best utilize our assets in the parks along with our IGA agreement with the school district and their facilities. There has been an interest in the future that the recreation program could potentially help schedule events on school facilities. So this agreement and procedures for athletic fields was, is starting to put in place those benchmarks, so to speak, to build on for the future as obviously the high school continues to develop in their renovations. But basically what we're showing here is a new process for athletic field reservations on our parks specifically. And it creates three separate tiers that, for groups that in the first tier would be the City of St. And it creates three separate tiers that, um, for groups that in the first tier would be the city of St. Helens and the school district. As the first options for use of those fields. The second tier are any returning tournaments and also in-city organizations. They would have the second option for use. And then the third option would be out-of-city organizations and any new tournaments that decide to use those fields. So there is a schedule for and an application that will be created that these groups will have to submit for their time reservations. That will be reviewed by staff internally. Um, right now, John and I have discussed with Thad and Sue and Shawna that this process would be managed by Shawna at the recreation program. Um, she is also in uh, communications with a lot of the organizations around the community and already setting up meetings to happen quarterly and semi-annually with all of these sport organizations to ensure that the organizations start to all get on the same page. There's a lot of he said, she said right now, and I don't get access to this because of this group and all of this. And so what we're hoping in with this process and the city coming in and help managing this is that we'll kind of get everybody onto the same page. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about this. And this is on for the um, for your approval at tonight's evening session.
Okay, you explained it very well. So, we're gonna move on.
Can I, uh, are we in the preference business of city, a local reuse? Uh, we get, is it a point system or just that they have more? What's the influence of them being within the city versus uh, out of the city or return tournament versus a, a new tournament?
Yep. So with the creation of the three tiers, um, any, any organization that wants to use the athletic fields for any purpose has to fill out an application. And when Shawna reviews these applications on a quarterly basis that the schedule outlines in the, in the process that you're approving tonight. Um, the city and school district would have kind of first dibs on any kind of dates that they needed. The second tier would then come into play and they would have uh, an opportunity to secure any dates that they would like to use their field reservations. Um, and if there are two city organizations that request the same date, same time. Um, if that were to happen, it would come down to who put in their application first.
Okay, so the city people are flat out first.
City and school.
City and school. Well, I'm, I'm telling, the local folk have the first call on it.
Yes, that is correct.
That's what a lot of people are worried about, that outsiders are gonna outrank them.
Yep, thank you. Yep.
I had a question uh, regarding the, and maybe you've already, you, you went over this and I missed it. But is there, how far out can you reserve? What is the time segment of reserving uh, a field a month from now? Or two months from now, or three months, or a week, or what's, what's the, what's the? Can you explain your uh, your timing with that?
Yes. So on page seven of the report, if you do pull up the packet, um, page seven outlines the uh, process that is reviewed quarterly. So in a kind of a rough idea, for the springtime, which is sometimes um, our most popular time with summer and, and softball, um, that we're calling this March through May. Um, the idea is that the groups would have to have their applications of the process turned in. Um, it would open up for applications in December. The applications would then be reviewed internally by staff in January and then in February, everything would be scheduled out. So you have to know at least a few months advance. We did put language in there for last minute events. That if we go through this process, let's say for um, for March and you didn't put in an application and you're just trying to create this event um, in February. If those dates are still available, the city will, will obviously allow that use and that reservation. Um, but it's just to kind of get all the other leagues and everybody in play. But you, people will still have an opportunity to reserve at, at least a, you know, a couple of weeks in advance or a month in advance. Um, if an event does come up that they need to use an athletic facility.
And then the timing on a reservation in terms of the amount of time that uh, they will be requesting to reserve, but can you go over that a bit?
There is no limit as far as the requests of time. That would be up to the internal staff of ensuring that for organizations like softball or baseball, that they're utilizing the time in the most effective manner. So that means that their schedules and games are planned on an hourly kind of basis. Similar to what the reservation schedule that we have now where it's kind of in sections. And that's kind of what the Parks Commission is kind of agreed to move towards that area. Instead of doing exclusive permits for like, you know, seven days or three months at a time. Um, we're really trying to hone in and use the athletic fields as efficient, as efficiently and effectively as we can. So we will continue to do that.
Okay, and do you have, uh, is there, is there a, is there a place for input? For people or organizations that feel that things need to change a little bit? Or it would be more effective if we did it this way or that way? Do you have a, are you open to that?
Yes, absolutely. Actually, and I kind of alluded to that earlier when I mentioned that Shawna was going to be setting up these quarterly meetings with other organizations to ensure that we kind of all get on the same page. And everybody feels that they have a spot on the table to come bring opinions or thoughts of changes that may be needed. Um, and I should mention the city council, and I know Council Morton's aware of this, that um, this was reviewed and approved by the Parks Commission. It was also reviewed by the um, St. Helens Athletic Director and the Superintendent Scott Stockwell as well. Um, and then about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, I did email it out to some of our softball folks. Um, like Jeff Kroll, Mr. Casey and a few others, um, that should have received this. Um, and I did not receive any comment back from them. So they, I did give them a specific opportunity for those heavy users to respond to this before it came to you tonight, and I did not hear anything back from them.
Thank you for explaining that. Appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions from now before we move on? Okay, so now we're gonna remove, move on to review proposed building inspector job description, John Walsh.
Oh, hey, Mayor, there is one more item, number five.
Hey, I was trying to jump forward.
That's okay, it shouldn't take too long.
All right, uh, let's go ahead and review proposed memorandum of understanding with St. Helens Police Association regarding police uniforms.
This should be really quick. Again, it's on the approval for tonight's agenda. And this is a adjustment to the, an MOU for the collective bargaining agreement that we have with our St. Helens Police Association. And it revolves around the clothing allowance that is allowed by officers. So when a new officer comes in, they have anywhere sometimes between four and five hundred dollars upwards to a thousand dollars or more of equipment that they have to purchase. And currently in our system right now, it's done on a reimbursement phase. So that person has to go out and put a thousand dollars or four hundred dollars on a credit card or something until they get reimbursed from the city. So what we're changing the process to is that the city will actually purchase that equipment. That it, and there is an approval process by the sergeants, lieutenants and chief, um, still before that purchase is made on a city credit card. Um, but this just kind of eases up that um, process of getting uniforms and equipment to our staff.
That sounds great. It actually sounds like less staff involved in, in, it's reviewed by the department head, so.
Yep.
It comes out of their budget.
Yep.
Okay, so that's, uh, now we can review proposed building inspector job description, John Walsh.
All right, thank you. So in, included in your packet is a draft uh, redo of the building inspector position. There are some changes to it. Typically every time I position that isn't billed, then we fill it. It uh, we have a chance to look at and update it. Make it more modernized and fit our needs. And this is the kind of the case here. What we're doing here and just rather than creating, some cities will have building inspector one, building inspector two, building inspector three. We're trying, trying to consolidate one job description that identifies it down to two categories of one and a two. And the, the main difference is the number of certifications that that individual would have joined the city. And uh, so this is a draft, um, you know, earlier in our planning report, we heard that of all the building and activity that's happening, there's a planning that, there's the saying of that, uh, planning, you know, building follows plan, basically. Then there's a, planning work gets done first and then the building kind of falls, falls in behind it. And, you know, we have several hundred, hundred units of residential housing coming online, the high school project, the um, the apartments and just all the other work that, you know, our building official right now is doing up to twenty inspections a day. And to try to do plan review on top of it's really challenging. It's uh, leave early and come late kind of thing. And uh, you need, need some help and there doesn't seem to be any sign at this point of things slowing down. So you have this building inspector job description that's been vetted. Typically, we used to vet them through the LGPI, um, Local Government Personnel Institute and League of Oregon Cities took that over. And now the Lane Council of Government has taken that over and given it another name, which escapes me. So it's been vetted by them. We have a little bit of conversation to do with the, the collective bargaining with the union. But otherwise, we feel it's good to move forward, at least announcing the position and getting some job applications in here. If you have any questions, uh, happy to hear them.
Well, I just see that Michael is on here and I'd like to congratulate Michael for the Silver Sparky Award that he received uh, a few days ago. And uh, he is a huge asset to our city and we appreciate all his, his hard work. And uh, um, he's gonna be a great boss to the new hire, so. That's all I have to comment on.
Stealing my report. That's gonna be part of my report after attending the, sending the award ceremony as we wait.
Uh, well, that's good that you're reporting on it. Um, okay, so let's go ahead and review the uh, proposed RFQ for St. Helens Riverwalk project, John.
All right, yeah, I'm pleased to be presenting these, both of these RFQs tonight, or this afternoon. The uh, there's been a lot of work that's got into these two RFQs that we initially had targeted today for the Riverwalk design, construction permit documents and, and other activities that go along with that. It's, it's for either this meeting or next. And then the following that, having the street utility design work being done. And we've managed to accelerate those and put, get those out now. So to try to get that work underway to line up with our funding coming online and just to all the good work this ahead. I can go into this with whatever level of detail you like. Probably the most notable dates at, at a minimum, I would like to talk about. We plan to get this out as soon as tomorrow into the Daily Journal of Commerce or Advertising. There's been a number of people that, organizations, firms that have come out and requested kind of preview the site. The words out in the development community to, that this project's gonna be coming available. So we would advertise as early as tomorrow. The there's a whole timeline in the packet there, but the deadline for the the, and there's an opportunity for questions and the then the, and the submit qualifications is December eighth. So by, by December eighth, we would have everybody that's gonna submit for review. And we go through an evaluation process, depending on the number of them, we would develop a shortlist, probably in the range of four, four to five perhaps. Then schedule interviews for them to come in and then select, you know, refine that scope of work. This is an RFQ, I should say, that's the qualification. So we're looking at a firm that has experience in the areas that we're looking for, not necessarily a, a development proposal. So we're, this is more about selecting, uh, what we feel like best meets our needs as far as a firm. And uh, you know, I word the contract sometime in February and you know, then spend the rest of the year working. It'd be about a year's worth of work going through to work on all of this.
So basically this is looking for a good firm. Are they then gonna be charged with designing it or just building it?
They are going to do the design engineering. Contract documents, bid assistance, construction management assistance. They're not gonna be constructing. This isn't a a design bid build. There'd still be a, that'd be a, this is a design bid build process, so.
Okay, and, and in this design businesses, that's gonna be the permits that affect it. Uh, coming from the fact that the Columbia River is a big deal and the bureaucrats grow on it worse than fish.
Yeah, the, the firm will be responsible for all permits in water and otherwise, so.
And that goes to the archeologic as well as
Everything, the whole
Okay.
Required, yeah.
Uh, will they present us with a list of the permits that are needed? Cause we're gonna need that list for other projects.
Um, our RFQ contemplates some of the permits, but the ones that we know about. We're pretty confident that we've engaged some consultants on what permits might be required, so. And if there's things that come up, I'm sure we can uh, look into that as far as archaeological and things.
Well.
That's a specific concern of yours.
The kayak uh, place because of the proximity to the river is gonna require archeologic. That I found out from Marine Board. Uh, and I was, that was surprising, but anyway, there were things that just seemed to be in place. And also an okay from the tribes, cause it's next to the river.
Okay, so Jenny's on the line of she.
Just one, one point. Yeah, John, did you wanna touch on the amphitheater portion of this? I think it's important.
Yeah, yeah, the scope of work here is not just the Riverwalk, the Riverwalk, and it's also the improvements in Columbia View Park around it. Coordinate the development of the, of the new stage amphitheater and the boardwalk so that they will work well together in concert. Have a more unified project. So yes, it's, it's more than just the Riverwalk. And the Riverwalk, there's a phase one and a phase two component. The phase one is the full construction documents, the phase, which goes down about three hundred feet-ish. And then it also does a thirty percent design on the rest of the, the project along the waterfront, all the way down to the the trestle and connecting back to Plymouth there, those connections. And you know, contemplates a relationship of interconnections between the roadway, the building development, building blocks. So that this project will coordinate with the next project, which is the street design, street utilities design. Track, it could be one, this could be, these two RFQs going at the same time could attract the same consultant. It could be two separate consultants, but we've set this up where they'll need to coordinate and work with each other to for the best outcome.
One of the uh, things I learned from the rainboard, some of it is gauge on how many feet back from the water. And some of these are when so many feet back from the original river level. Or which is now historic. Um, I assume, well, this is gonna be covered with the, the first design group tries to find out what we can do.
Yes, and another big piece of that is where your funding sources are coming from too, as far as the requirements, kind of overlays what you're talking about there.
Yeah, thank you.
Federal being more intensive.
Okay, it's the first step in, in the first step of moving this project forward.
And this is a big step. This is a milestone, for sure.
Yep.
And there's been a lot of really good work that's gone into this and appreciate all the work that Jenny's done, all the work that Sue's done to really push all the other distractions aside to get this up and going here.
Sure, let's hear from Sue. Let's uh, review the proposed RFQ for First Street Strand Street Road and Utility Extension Project.
Yeah, uh, pretty much just what John is talking about as far as this works in concert with the uh, Riverwalk RFQ. Um, and again, we're hoping to get both of these out at the same time so that we can close them at the same time. The, the two working together are so critically important. Um, but this is just the extension of First Street and the connection over to Plymouth. The, the extension of Strand Street and the connection, that intersection with um, South First Street as it goes through the veneer property site. And then all of the utilities that will have to be installed, uh, along with that to provide new services to that whole property. So there'll be sanitary sewer, storm drain and uh, water services all throughout that, that property. As well as the interconnections to the Riverwalk and maintaining those um, view corridors. And you know, all those things that have been already discussed and vetted through multiple platforms as far as community reviews and staff input, et cetera. Uh, so just pretty much what John said. This is the, this is the beginning steps of a very, very, very exciting project. Looking forward to getting this going and um, both of these need to both of these need to, to work together. One particular item with the, the street extensions is that we're also looking to relocate one of the sanitary sewer lift stations to a more centralized location. And also shorten the length that it will have to pump to get to the wastewater treatment plant. Now that we can go directly through the veneer property instead of having to pump over the hill and over to Fourth Street.
The fact that you're going to run a big line down around the corner. Are you going to chop out some of that rock so the street doesn't abruptly narrow when you go around that corner?
That has definitely been something that has been mentioned in, in the past, a, a few different times by different people. So that would be something that we would want to have them look into when they start looking at the alignment and the cross sections for the street connections, yes.
Now, one other thing on sewer, if you look at the homes on the cliff there that overlook the veneer properties, a bunch of sewer lines that come down that cliff, are they going to be moved or are they just going to be up there ugly?
That's unknown at this time because it will all depend on the, the new design for the sanitary lines that would run through the, the veneer site.
Okay, because it's, it looks terrible right now.
There are a few there that it's very interesting, yes.
Good point.
So one of the, one of the things I should mention with this, this RFQ on this, the streets is that we're asking for, what, one of the big unanswered questions in my mind anyway, throughout this process, I've been with it since the beginning is the orientation of how Plymouth connects or, or First Street connects with Plymouth. And how that, whether that road is closer to the block or whether to create a bigger building block on the waterfront or whether that road is further away from the block. What's up?
I've, I've been trying to buzz in and I hit the wrong button, but when we were going through the plan, we talked about it multiple times. Because we want to be accessible to all modes of transportation. And that corner with a bicycle is not for the faint of heart. So just thinking that if you put that intersection, just as I watch as we're more open, just watching families coming down there with wagons and strollers and just thinking, because people go too fast, they just do. And just wanting to make sure people have the best possible sightlines of that corner. And, you know, we had talked, Jacob and I had talked, and I know Sue and I had talked about having, you know, traffic calming, center refuge, those kinds of things that would give people a chance to get across that street. Because if, you know, when you create a loop, people cruise. And so we have to be prepared for that habit to interface with a pedestrian community. And as we're building all these divisions of all this housing, we're going to have hundreds more people wanting to access this wonderful boardwalk that's so open to the public. And we have to make it safe and open to the public because just open is not good enough. It needs to be safely accessible for, you know, whether it's in a wheelchair or with a stroller or on a bicycle. We need to make sure that we provided for that interface with cars. But I know that Jacob and Sue and I and Jenny have talked a lot about what that corner looks like at Plymouth and First. Because uptight against the curve of the rock seems like a good idea, but that seems like a real blind corner, too.
Yeah, I, I was actually just looking at that the other day, but so that's absolutely one of the things that we will have them look, look into more closely. And then, John, I don't know if you want to finish your thoughts.
Yeah, my, my thought, but related, very related to you with that concern.
Yes, exactly. Alternative alignments, yeah.
Yeah, there we were, rather than defining the alignment or requesting a proposal for two alignments. One that's a little further away from the block and one that's a little closer or at least, at least two, one that would make a development block on the left side and that one that they would. See development on just one side of the street or perhaps. So that's it.
Okay, it's nice that this project is moving forward.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so let's go to review proposed library policies. Margaret.
Good afternoon. You have in your packet three library policies that, the contents of which have pretty much been defined by our processes and procedures for quite some time. This is a, a more formal publication of those processes and policies and with the intent to make them available on the library website. The background for the requirement that they be on the library website is some legislation that was passed by the, the Oregon Legislature that was part of defining what a public library is. And there are now minimum conditions that libraries serving different sized communities must meet. And having these policies formalized and on our website are the only conditions in those minimum conditions that we need to complete in order to satisfy that new legislation. So if you have any questions about them, they, they determine how we develop our library collection of materials. How we protect patron confidentiality. And what are our policies for circulating our materials and issuing library cards? Pretty, pretty basic stuff. I will mention though, that in the collection development policy, and there's a process whereby if someone asks, or one of our patrons asks us to reconsider an item that we have in our collection, meaning that they feel either we should move it to a different section, say from young adult to adult, or if they feel there's something about that particular item that should be reviewed. We have a process described whereby, and at, at the next level of review, we would involve our library board. And so the next steps that our library board is going to be addressing are some changes to the municipal code and to the library board bylaws that will show this expanded role. And as well as some other things that over time, the library board has come to perform in support of the library. So that, those changes will be coming in the next few months. But this is what we have in front of you today. Are there any questions about the policies? Okay, it'll be in your packet tonight.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, strategic action plan update.
Counselor, the only thing that I wanted to mention is that the city is moving ahead with the refinance of the bonds that we discussed, and you approved a resolution a while ago. I did just finalize numbers with the bond council. And that will go out to bid or sale for the bonds tomorrow morning. So hopefully, all should go as planned. The numbers look right now that the city with the repayment schedule that John and I have worked out for the refinance of the bonds. We've decided to look at accelerating some of those payments that were out to about 2037. And with the reason for that acceleration of the repayment was to kind of better align ourselves with the loan that the city is likely going to do with the state for the infrastructure on the waterfront and veneer property. So that estimated savings with the accelerated payment plan should roughly be just a little bit over a million dollars in savings for the city. And we will get everything paid off. The ones that were refinancing, there's still one debt service that we're not refinancing. It is a DEQ loan, that's 0% interest, so there's no point in refinancing that. But we will have scheduled to pay off all of those debt services by 2029 versus 2037. And, and the only other thing I wanted to update is on the business code, municipal code changes that myself and our attorneys and a couple other employees, department managers have relooked at. We've actually rewritten the entire business license code language in our municipal code. So that has been reviewed by attorneys and was just sent out to the Chamber of Commerce to send out to their members for review. And it includes a number of changes that I'll be happy to go through when we bring it to the city council likely in November. And that is all the updates I have.
I can add, add one thing to that. The, I think Matt may have mentioned last week, this, our last meeting, as far as the bond rating that was required with the, the refinance. City had never had a bond rating done before. You know, but some cities don't do terribly well with that sort of thing, but we came back, you know, fairly strong at a double A rating. There's only one, one classification higher than that, so it shows a lot of fiscal stewardship and fiscal financial portability, I suppose, and in some sense to, you know, have healthy reserves and get financial policies. So just wanted to share that.
Excellent. We got good credit.
Yeah, good credit.
Okay, John, let's get a report from you.
What? I think most of my reports been talked about, so I'm, the fire marshal, distinct fire marshals report had a surprise award to Mike Droy, our, our building official, along with all the building officials in Columbia County, just for their good work and stewardship. And they really talked a lot about the collaboration and how the relationship between the county building department and the fire district is stronger than it's ever been. So the, the marshal's office has never issued that to a public agency before for this. So this was the first time, first time for them. So they had all their brass came down to Scapoose yesterday, and there were some invites. It was all at very last minute, but Mike Roy, Don Bandoff, Dom, which is also our interim for a while there. Also received the word along with Sue, the, Suzie Doll of the county there. So congratulations to them and their, their ongoing efforts to move our community ahead here, so. We talked about the Riverwalk and the parcelization plan and the RFQs and things. And then the various grants, I wanted to touch on Halloween. Last weekend, we had a, a visit from, actually, we received a letter on Friday and then an inspection on Saturday for the health department to come out and visit Halloween and go through the Halloween the haunted house and spend some time here to actually see how it's functioning, working. And they left very pleased. They gave us a certificate of compliance of our efforts there to control this course of people that want to come here. It's not perfect, but it's, we're doing the best we can. And you can only, you know, some people are very compliant. It seems like most people that come and visit are, are very compliant and they don't find their temperature and their, you know, the, the inconveniences of wearing a mask and coming through things, but others, not so much, but but overall, they were pleased with that and really wanted to, you know, it's, it's been a challenge to, to control the amount of people that want to be here. Social media traffic, it's just unbelievable practically with hundreds and hundreds of thousands of people coming to our sites, wanting to visit, have tickets and and get them, however they get them and, and just visit the community. So, you know, we're not encouraging to people KGW is going to do a story tomorrow, they're out on Monday, it's going to air tomorrow morning, I believe it's eight. To see a little spot about what we're doing. And what we're doing with that is emphasizing people to come to the virtual party on October 31st at 7:00 PM in the evening. Like you go to Spirit of Halloween Town, the Facebook website there or the one website page or the website. You will be directed to, to a link there that you can get into this virtual party that we're going to have. So it's being pre-recorded, so that it'll, it's basically a Halloween party without very COVID friendly. We're hoping that it goes far and wide and people enjoy it, so.
John, sorry to interrupt. Tina mentioned in the comments that it will air on Friday, not tomorrow.
Oh, Friday. I'm ahead, day ahead of myself. I did see it was Friday. Other than that, I think that's a interesting time.
Mayor, you are on mute right now.
There, how about now? Okay, good job. All right, so we also have something down here, other business. Oh, never mind, that's for my information only. Okay, so we will take a 10-minute break and then we'll be going into executive session. We might as well do our 10-minute break now.
Mayor, before you go, I'd like to say two things. As you know, we have this viral mess going on, and I'd like to give a high five because school nurses in their association have been working quite hard, Robin and her crew been working quite hard to build up what we're going to do next, what kind of information the schools and the teachers are going to need. Kind of a head of direction from the mayor, I mean, from the governor about how to keep our kids safe. And you're not seeing anything in the newspaper about what they're doing, but they're doing a lot of good work, kind of quietly and incredibly important. So understand that a school nurses are out there doing their thing with this silly virus. And in the same way of little things you don't see, Margaret just told me that they've got the heavy duty filter system in the library. Easier to do with no people around, but incredibly important with this virus. So these are the silent things that seem to be happening in our city that are keeping people safe that you don't see much about and won't make the newspapers, but realize we got people doing that.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Lopez. Okay, so as I was starting to, to share that we are, go ahead and take our 10-minute break, but we'll be going into executive session as previously announced. But we'll take a 10-minute break and we will resume with an executive session here in just a little bit.